Right now, public media in Alaska is in dire straits. And the public media station where I work is in especially dire straits because our per capita coverage has got to be, I would say, potentially the lowest in the entire country, maybe the entire world. Because we cover an area that is bigger than the state of Ohio, and in that entire area, there's less than 10,000 people.
Well, what is the area that you cover?
We cover all of Prince William Sound and all of Copper River Valley. We cover Wrangell St. Elias National Park and Chugatch National Forest. In my opinion, and in the opinion of many, public radio in Alaska is a public service. It is like a school district, or a fire department, or a highway. We have these disparate communities that are very far away from each other. They must be connected, and they are connected by public radio.
Welcome to the East Anchorage Book Club. I'm your host, Andrew Gray. The purpose of this podcast is to tell the stories of Alaskans of interest and importance. Today, our guest is James Devens, who is the Director of KCHU Public Radio in Valdez, a position he has held for five years, and at the time he was appointed, made him the youngest director of a public radio station in America. Jimmy was elected to Valdez City Council in 2020 and reelected in 2023. He unsuccessfully ran for mayor in 2024, but he remains an active member on the city council and is a founding member of their housing committee. Although Jimmy and I discussed the absolute destruction that cuts in federal funding will have on KCHU, much of the first part of today's episode will be about Jimmy's late grandfathers. John Devens Sr., who gained national fame in 1989 as mayor of Valdez during the Exxon Valdez oil spill, and Jim Robison, who was the president of the Alaska AFL-CIO and served as the Alaska Labor Commissioner from 1982 to 1987. Jimmy and I finished today's episode by discussing housing policy. This interview was recorded while I was in Valdez and on a walk with Jimmy, so you will hear occasional background noise, including a very angry raven. James Devens, welcome to the podcast.
Thank you. I'm glad to be a guest.
So tell us about your early life.
Well, I was born in Valdez, Alaska, and I grew up in Valdez, Alaska. I've spent the majority of my entire life here in Alaska, with only a few exceptions outside, and the majority of that right here in Valdez.
And you were born in 1992?
Yes.
And what was it like growing up in Valdez in the 90s?
You know, I still contend to this day that Valdez is probably the best place to grow up. It's the best place to raise kids. It's very safe. Our school district is fantastic. There's plenty to do and plenty of ways to interface with nature. But there were a lot of hardships innate to just being in a rural town in Alaska. I grew up in, I guess you'd call it abject poverty. My family, my mother, my two sisters and I, we lived in a 35-foot airstream trailer until I was about 16 years old.
So your mother and your two sisters are your younger sisters?
No, they're both older. I'm the youngest one.
Okay. And do you guys all have the same dad?
No.
Different dads?
Yep, different dads.
And did you know your dad?
I knew him, but he was not an especially significant figure in my youth.
What did your mom do when you were growing up?
She did everything. My mom consistently had two, or three, or four jobs, because, I mean, raising three kids in the end of the road when you don't have a degree, it's really a difficult job. And so she tended bars, she waited tables, she was an assistant in a tax office, she scrubbed toilets, she was a maid at a hotel. She did anything that she had to do.
I'm surprised, like, this was not what I was expecting, and I guess it's because I know who your grandfather was, like, the mayor of Valdez during the Valdez oil spill. But being a mayor of a small town doesn't mean that you're rich. Can you talk about, like, your granddad?
My grandfather was somebody that you might call an overachiever. He did everything that you could imagine would be a cool thing to talk about at a party. He was a small plane pilot, he was a sheriff's deputy, he was a doctor, he was a college professor. And the reason that he came to Alaska was because there was a dearth of audiologists. He had seen a news report that was done on PBS in the 1960s about how there was an enormous number of people in rural Alaska that were shut out from society because they were profoundly deaf, and they didn't have resources for things like hearing aids, and speech therapy, and sign language support. So these were people that were essentially living disconnected from the world, and that was something that affected him deeply, because he had studied audiology because his mother went deaf from measles at the age of 39. She was a music teacher, and a voice coach, and an opera singer, and a church organist. And then she went almost completely deaf as a result of illness, and that was something that really affected him on an emotional level.
So he moved to Alaska because he wanted to be an audiologist?
Because he specifically wanted to serve the underserved communities of Alaska.
And I guess, how did he end up in Valdez?
So before he had decided that it was going to be a part of his, you know, life mission to help cure deafness in rural Alaska, he had been a college professor for a number of years, and he worked with a group that helped to found a college, a community college in Silver Springs, Vermont. It was a boarding school that had shut down in, I want to say, the 1800s or something like that. And then a group of professors that just saw a need for college in that region said, this is an opportunity to save this historic building and rescue it from foreclosure, but also to preserve that history and to extend the opportunity for education in this area. And he was honestly, like, a wingman on that project. He was not deeply involved. He was just one of the associates that helped to make that a possibility. But he saw through that process that it wasn't as daunting as he had imagined. And so while he was up here in Alaska, one of the places that he liked to visit the most was Valdez, and he was so surprised that Valdez, as vibrant of a community as it was, did not have a community college.
And that was Valdez prior to the pipeline?
Yes, this is Valdez in the early 1970s.
So he started Prince William Sound College?
Yeah, at that time, it was called Prince William Sound Community College.
And that's how your family got entrenched in Valdez?
Yeah, I guess you could say that, yeah. He was involved with the college at some level, all the way up until he died. And through his community involvement, he became a member of some of the local fraternal orders, he became a member of the boards of a lot of local charities, he eventually became a city councilman, and then he became the mayor. And by unfortunate happenstance, he happened to be the mayor on the day of the Exxon Valdez oil spill.
I know about him from reading his New York Times obituary, because I guess what made him memorable and special and deserving of a New York Times obituary was because he was so dedicated to the cleanup and making sure that he organized other mayors in the vicinity to be part of the cleanup, that he didn't run for reelection as mayor, because he wanted to focus on that issue. And then he ran against Don Young twice for the US House.
Yeah, he realized that the duties of the mayor were so important that he couldn't allow himself to neglect them, but he also realized that the duties of our region and our community and our statewide and national community to respond to oil spills and the danger of ongoing environmental crises was more important to him. And so he wanted to try to leverage the notoriety that he had gotten from being the mayor at that time, and from forming the Council of Oiled Mayors, and helping with the founding of the Regional Citizens Advisory Council, that he wanted to use that public attention to try to focus people onto that topic, because he just saw firsthand what kind of devastation that oil spill brought to this area. At that time, they didn't know if the bird populations would ever rebound, they didn't know if fish populations would ever rebound, they didn't know if we would see whales or orcas ever again. In fact, some of the populations have never returned.
Your grandfather was concerned about the animals coming back after the oil spill? And you said in some cases, they haven't. Has fishing recovered in Valdez?
That's a difficult question, because there has been a lot of effort made by the fishery development. We, you know, we have Valdez Fishery Development Association, and there are other fisheries within Prince William Sound. And by and large, they are doing a good job at introducing fish into the ecosystem to be caught commercially. So it is hard to compare the numbers of now versus then. I will tell you that last year's pink salmon return was the lowest on record in 75 years, so that is very alarming. But I will also tell you that immediately following the oil spill, the herring fishery collapsed permanently. We have never had a viable herring fishery since, and previously to that, we had one of the most vibrant herring fisheries that there was. In that regard, we can see a long-term effect on the ocean ecosystem. And honestly, I think that no comprehensive enough study was done at the time, because nobody knew what to look for yet. And now, because so much time has passed, a lot of the scientific and forensic evidence that would have led us to the conclusions that would tell us what we can do to improve has been washed away by the years.
Do you feel confident that Alaska is doing enough to prevent an Exxon Valdez disaster from happening again?
That's another one of those questions that the answer is not an easy one, because in some ways, we're doing more than anyone. Truly, the culture for safety here in Valdez especially is incredible. They really make a big effort. But mistakes still happen. Just a few years ago, we had two fires at a refinery, and we've had minor spills along the pipeline corridor in the time since the Exxon Valdez oil spill, and we've had close calls. Because no matter how many precautions we take, there's always human error, there's always natural disaster, there's always acts of God, there are things that are beyond our ability to plan and prepare for. And so I take it as our responsibility to plan and prepare as best as we can. And I think in many cases, we are doing that. So my grandfather became an audiologist because his mother went deaf, and he founded a college because he saw a need for one. And he was consistently motivated by these type of, almost like an epiphany moment, where he would realize that there was something that he had the power to address, or he had the opportunity to address. And that is something that I have tried to instill in myself, because he was not a dedicated environmentalist. He had honestly relatively little interest in environmentalism, per my understanding, previously to the oil spill. But at the time of the oil spill, he saw the kind of devastation, not just on the animals, but on the people that relied on the animals and the nature and the water, and the economy here, and all these dominoes that just started crashing down because of that travesty, that he felt that it was a part of his mission to try to do something about it. And in some ways, he was very successful. He spoke strongly in favor of one of the landmark bills for oil field safety and oil operations standards. So in certain ways, he had an enormous amount of success in that effort, but in other ways, I do feel like it distracted him from his commitment to his community, because he had to leave the post of mayor to be able to do that. He would not and could not run for another term because of the amount of time that he was investing in trying to hold accountable all of the failings that he saw in the system, all the things that he thought were an example of a missed opportunity, or an intentional dereliction of duty or negligence that led to that type of catastrophe.
So when you were going door-to-door, when you were first running for office, did you have anybody say, I hated your grandfather, I hated you too?
I did. See, my grandfather was actually really widely popular in the community because of the coincidence of timing for when he served, and so many people recognized that he really stepped up to the plate in a really challenging time. So for the most part, he was pretty widely regarded as a positive force during those times, an unnecessary character in the history of this town. But obviously, every political figure has detractors, so I did get people that said that. The majority of my response to that was just that, obviously, we're two different people, and, you know, we can discuss the conditions that existed at that time, and the conditions that exist at this time, and you can decide for yourself whether you think I'm a good candidate. And most people respected that.
So since we're talking about grandfathers, I want to talk about your paternal grandfather, James Robison of Eagle River, who was the president of the Alaska AFL-CIO and Labor Commissioner.
Well, so during his early days in Alaska, he also lived in Valdez, and equally, he spent time working and living in Anchorage, because he worked with the laborers' union.
And did you know him?
Not especially. I only met him a few times, because, you know, as we discussed at the beginning of the podcast, I was not especially close with my dad during my youth, and therefore, I was an additional step in distance away from his dad. And he died by the time I realized that I might want to have a relationship with him, because, interestingly, this is something that people ask me all the time, because they look at my two grandfathers, and they see them as these influential figures in the development of our modern Alaska. And they say, oh, well, you know, you do all these type of things with, like, public media, and with the city council, and with activism and volunteerism, and so were you inspired by your grandfathers? And truly, I would say, I am now very inspired by both of my grandfathers. But when I started having those type of feelings and attitudes about the world and how it's our duty to work and improve it, I wasn't thinking about either of them at all.
Did you, but I guess you saw your grandfather Devens more?
Yeah, significantly more. He was dedicated to his family, but unfortunately, he was a workaholic. Like I said, he did everything that you could think of on your bucket list, he tried to do it. And part of it was just that he was one of those people that enjoyed trying to reach every experience that he could in his life, but a part of it was, like I said, he was somebody that was really motivated by his mission. And I would actually say that that's a similarity between the two, is they both just decided on something, or several things, that they were very committed to, and they kind of made that their life's work.
Does your mom think of you as following, like, in her dad's footsteps?
That is a funny question, because I run into members of the community all the time that ask me that exact question. They say, are you trying to fulfill a family legacy? Were you inspired to do this by your grandfather? You know, what made you want to be involved, and so on? But my family, they, I don't think they think of it in that way. Sometimes they draw parallels. We have topics that come up repeatedly, you know, because of the same community, and many of the same entities and figures are still as relevant today as they were in the 1980s. And so sometimes they'll say, oh, I remember when your grandfather was dealing with the same problem. Let me try to think about what he did. And realistically, that's kind of the only way that I get input or advice from my grandpa from beyond the grave, is somebody else that was there with him says, you know, when he had the same problem, he solved it doing XYZ. And I do actually often get, like, a little kernel of wisdom from those examples, but I feel that I am forging my own path in many ways, because by the time I had an interest in community involvement, he was retired from it. And by the time I was on the city council, he had already passed away.
You started working at the radio station when you were, like, 12? How did that come about?
Well, as I said earlier, my family was very low income. We had very modest standard of living, and I was motivated to try to help out in any way that I could. So I had been doing a lot of odd jobs. I had been, you know, doing the Tom Sawyer thing and painting the fence, and I had been mowing yards, and digging ditches, and chopping wood, and anything to get a, you know, just a few dollars to put back into the household. And I had been burning myself out at a young age. I was missing school. I got a bad reputation with my teachers, because they thought I was, you know, like, some kind of lazy troublemaker, but the real thing is, I was just, I was burning the candle at both ends, and it was really difficult at that age. So I was walking down the road one day, and I was kind of reflecting on, you know, what kind of future I had to look forward to, because even at that age, I was aware that if you grow up in poverty, you usually stay in poverty. It's a difficult trap to get out of. And while I was in the headspace of, you know, what can I be doing, what's a job that I could find rewarding and develop a career in, I was walking by the big yellow building, KCHU Public Radio in Valdez, and they had a big sign in the window that said, "Help Wanted." And I was like, man, if that's not some kind of divine intervention, that felt like a, I mean, you know, I'm no kind of superstitious, but it did feel really profoundly coincidental. So I walked inside, and I asked the person at the front desk, what type of job are you hiring for? And they said they were hiring an intern. And I said, is there an age requirement? And they said 14. And I said, well, I'm 12. And they said, let me get back to you. And they went and talked to the manager. Incidentally, the manager was the staff writer for the local newspaper, and he was a part-time employee at the teen center. So he had already met me through the teen center, and he had already met me through the newspaper, because at that age, just maybe a couple of weeks before that, I had made a public appeal to the city council. And he was there as a staff reporter, doing a story on the meeting. The topic of that meeting was our local mobile home park, one of the, one of the local mobile home parks, had a failed water report. And they had had several, starting in 1996. And that's where I was living at the time, with my whole family in this teeny-tiny mobile home, and we had just found that our water was illegally undrinkable. So I went and made an appeal to the city council. As, at 12 years old, this is my first time ever speaking in front of a government body in a, you know, a semi-official capacity, as public business from the floor. And I had done my homework, and I had a teacher who was in the room at the time, and she said, I'm surprised you did your homework, because, as I said, at that age, I was not a strong student, because I was just missing a lot of school. And apparently, that had made an impression on the radio station manager, who was working as a staff reporter. And he said, how about you come back for an interview right now? They gave me the job on the spot. They said, we're not going to hold any more interviews, you're hired. And I have been involved in the public radio since then.
That was when you were 12? You got involved with the radio station then, I guess the internship turned into something more than an internship?
Eventually, I went from programming and development support, and then programming operations and development support, and then programming and operations assistant, and then maybe eight years ago, I got a call from the new director at that time, John Anderson, and he said, we're hiring for more on-air spots, and I remember you being a great intern. Would you be interested in coming back and helping us to at least train the new employees, and maybe consider taking one of those spots? And I said, well, absolutely, I'll just come train on a volunteer basis, I'm happy to help with that. And I came and I helped with the training, and I ended up working as an on-air staff. Then eventually, over time, I just got promoted to be the director of the station.
And you became the director in what year?
2020.
2020, so after you'd been elected to city council the first time.
So interestingly, I got elected to city council, and I got promoted to director about a month apart from each other.
Had anyone in your family been a journalist?
My mother did work as a stringer. A stringer is like somebody that is hired just to do a specific story, often on a specific topic. Like, a lot of times, they'll be, like, political news, and they'll get a call to say, we have a lead on this story, can you work for a defined period on this project, and we'll pay you a defined amount of money?
What topic was she a stringer on?
City council.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, it is interesting. And it was not during the time that my grandfather was on the city council, and it was obviously not during the time that I was on city council. So there has kind of always been an ongoing thread in the family of being somewhat paying attention to local and state politics, as well as being somewhat interested in journalism, I suppose.
So you've talked about, like, how by the time you knew your grandfathers, they were kind of done with their political life. But your grandfathers were alive when you were 12, and you went and spoke to the city council about the water issue. Did you get any feedback?
Yes. I actually, I spoke to both of them on the topic during their lifetime. My mother's father, John Devens, I spoke to that evening. He had been listening to the council meeting on the radio, and he called me to tell me that I did a very good job. And then he gave me all types of advice on how to have done a very better job.
What's his advice, do you remember?
In some ways pessimistic advice. He said, you made a lot of great points, but you made them in a way that that group is not going to understand you. He's like, sometimes you gotta just really give them the bare bones argument, and don't try to dazzle them with numbers.
He was like, at 12 years old, you were speaking above their heads.
And I don't think that I was. I do think that I came at them with the expectation that they had the same amount of information as me, and I actually came to realize during that testimony, that was not true. Some of them, it was their first introduction to the issue. I just assumed before that, that the leaders of a community would have some understanding of all of the issues going on in the community. Now, me, as a leader in my community, I recognize that that is a very big ask, that is really difficult to understand everything that's going on, and that's why elected representatives have such a necessity to listen to their constituents, and the constituents have a civic duty to speak to their representatives.
You graduated from high school in Valdez, and then did you go away for college?
No, I went to Prince William Sound College in Valdez, and I also went to University of Alaska Anchorage.
You studied there?
Now, see, that's one of the reasons I didn't graduate. I was pretty indecisive in regards to what specific degree program I wanted to be in, and I changed it more than once. I felt like it was more value to me to learn the information that I wanted to know than it was to get a piece of paper that said that I did that. In retrospect, and again pessimistically, I do think that the piece of paper could have had a lot of value in my life. I think that maybe I would have had a less of a difficult time in some aspects of my adult life if I did have a degree. But what really happened is I just didn't focus on a specific degree, and I did not have enough money to continue going to school.
Well, you became the director of the public radio station, and you were the youngest director of a public radio station in the country. Did you always think that you would go back and finish your degree, and then at a certain point, realize that wasn't going to happen?
Realistically, what it was, it was completely economic pressures. I was seeing some of the adults in my life that were just really struggling with things like student loan debt, and medical debt, and generally just, you know, the uphill battle of making ends meet. And I had employment opportunities, and I had hireable skills. At that time, I was certified in general contractor, and I decided that it made more sense for me to enter the workforce than to continue to pursue a degree.
As I was phrasing the question, I was thinking, well, you can always go back and finish your degree. It's never too late to go finish your degree. But you just feel like the timing is just not right for right now.
We were talking earlier about having kind of like a mission or a calling, or, you know, those type of feelings. And right now, public media in Alaska is in dire straits. And the public media station where I work is in especially dire straits, because our per capita coverage has got to be, I would say, potentially the lowest in the entire country, maybe the entire world. Because we cover an area that is bigger than the state of Ohio, and in that entire area, there's less than 10,000 people.
Well, what is the area that you cover?
We cover all of Prince William Sound and all of Copper River Valley. We cover Wrangell St. Elias National Park and Chugatch National Forest.
Explain why the rural public radio station is so important.
So in the majority of all the communities that we serve, we are the only media that they have access to. Here in Valdez, there's another radio station, there's a private radio station. And in Cordova, there's a private radio station. I think everywhere else that we serve, which is 22 other communities, in the majority of those communities, we are the only media that they have access to, which means we're not only the only access they have to, like, arts and culture content, to news content, topics of local interest, but also where they're only access to emergency alerts. And that's something that, that keeps me awake at night, thinking about these tiny communities. I'm not sure how familiar you are with the story of the 1964 Great Alaska Earthquake.
I know that there was a tsunami that destroyed Valdez. That's the end of my knowledge.
Yeah, so there were, there were actually two main- Yeah, so there were, there were actually two major wave events at the time of the 1964 earthquake. One of them is the one that famously happened here in Valdez, and it destroyed the majority of Old Town Valdez. It made it uninhabitable. But there was also a wave event that happened in the village of Chenega. They now call it Old Chenega. They've moved the entire village down the shoreline to a different location, because half of the population of Chenega died in that wave. And in Valdez, dozens more. And the thing that all of the people that died on that day have in common is that they were standing in the bad spot to stand. They had no warning. If they had had even 10 minutes' warning, every single person that died on that day would have lived. They would have had moved to high ground. They would have gotten away from the shore, and they would have lived.
Do you feel like your radio station has a political leaning to the left?
I do not. So this is what I will say in that regard. I myself am nonpartisan. I'm not a member of any political party. And I have been very fervent on that for my entire career as a public figure. I will not affiliate with any political party. Not because I think that the political parties are bad. I think that both of the primary political parties in America have some merits. But I think that the concept and institution of a political party is harmful to the cultural discussion and narrative around how politics should work. Because the more you try to group people's opinions, the more you erase people's opinions. And when you're grouping every opinion down into two binaries, either Republican or Democrat, you're doing a disservice to 99% of all of the opinions, because nobody identifies fully with one or the other. And beyond that, I don't think that our local public radio has any bias. I think that there are programs on there that may have bias, but they tell you in the beginning, "This program contains opinions of the show, the hosts, the producers." And the institution of public radio is, by its definition, a democracy. Our public radio and all of the public radios in Alaska have something called a community advisory board. And the community advisory board is members of the community that advise on what type of programming we should and should not play on the local public media station. So if you're unhappy with what's on your public media station, the answer is not to get rid of it, it's to get involved. You can help guide the discussions that are being had.
Would you say that folks who consider themselves to be more conservative in this particular region of Alaska would be able to speak to the value of continuing the funding for public radio? Or are there conservatives in Valdez who'd be like, "Oh, we got rid of another liberal, you know, establishment"?
In any population, there are people that dislike the institutions as they exist. But I will put it this way. Right now in Alaska, 100% of our federal representation are members of the Republican Party, in Dan Sullivan, Lisa Rakowski, and Nick Baggage. And Dan Sullivan and Lisa Rakowski both have spoken in the past repeatedly in support of public media. And in the recent discussion of the rescission package, they have also both stated that the vast majority of the public feedback they got was in concern for supporting the public media as it exists in Alaska. So the fact that they're able to win with a majority of votes, and a majority of their constituents are in favor of public media, that would tell me that, of course, there are conservatives that are in support of public media in Alaska. I don't think that it's a political issue at all. I think it's a matter of access, and it's critical access.
Dan Sullivan voted for the rescission?
He did. He hasn't been very great this week. And I don't want to criticize him, because I understand he's been quite busy. But he hasn't been very great this week about his public communications regarding the topic. But at the time of the rescission act, he said that he was working to cut out some kind of special deal for Alaska remote stations. As a representative of a remote station, and as somebody that has spoken to almost every director of every remote station in Alaska now, no one has heard back what exactly that means for us. And I'm going to tell you honestly, it's really alarming. Because if we don't get support, these institutions will go away.
Can you talk about the specific challenge that your radio station is facing because the transmitter's falling into the water?
I mean, that's not even the most specific challenge we're facing, if I'm being totally honest. That is an enormous challenge. The biggest challenge we're facing is the budget cuts. We have fought our way through many gauntlets. We are a resilient folk in public radio. And we could make it through our issue with the transmitter. We cannot make it through the budget cuts. In my opinion, and in the opinion of many, as I said, public radio in Alaska is a public service. It is like a school district, or a fire department, or a highway. And especially in Alaska, it is very similar, in my opinion, to the highways. In Alaska, we have more miles of highway per capita than almost anywhere else in the world. It is an anomaly how much highway we have for how tiny our population is. And the reason is exactly the same reason that we have so many public radio stations. Because we have these disparate communities that are very far away from each other, but they have to rely on each other to have an economy, to have a culture, and to have a sense of community. They must be connected. And they're physically connected by these many, many miles of highways. And they are spiritually and culturally connected by public radio.
And what you're speaking to is, that's against the argument that like, "Well, if it's really needed, then it should be able to support itself."
That is an argument that a lot of people have made. They are coming at the topic as though it's an institution of business, like it's a, like, like it's a commercial endeavor. And I believe in the free market in most cases. I truly think that the free market does guide toward innovation and toward efficiency and all these kind of things. But there are certain things, like the highways, and like the public radio, like the fire department, that if you try to do it as a commercial enterprise, it just doesn't work. And especially in remote communities. Right now, KCHU Public Radio and other public radios in Alaska have been supported at a level that is unheard of and unprecedented in public radio other places. In our ongoing fundraiser and effort to address our erosion problem at our main transmitter, we have received an amount of public support that comes close to $10 per man, woman, and child in our broadcast area. If they did that in WNYC, New York, they would have a $120 million enterprise. It'd be one of the best-funded media empires in the entire world. They are one of the most popular public radio, and they receive, in public support, something like pennies per capita.
Community here understands the value and is putting their money where their mouth is. But quite simply, you need more than that. Because there's not enough people.
Yeah, there's not enough people. If everybody gave, they could not possibly give enough.
Yeah, and I guess that's an important number. And I don't know if you know off the top of your head, but like, how much, what percentage of your funding is federal?
This year, it was close to 70%. And next year, 0%, hypothetically.
It was a 70% budget cut.
It would be a 70% cut. And we already have had ongoing cuts from the past, I don't know, seven or eight years in a row? Really, the last 20 years in a row, public radio generally has been seeing dwindling funding, in part because of an actual reduction in funds, and in part because of inflationary pressures. But because of our loss of state funding under the current administration, it is one of the items that has been redlined, vetoed because of the ongoing budget crisis in Alaska. That has already been an extreme challenge for our local public radio. And I know many others in the state. The federal funding was the only thing that was supporting the columns and keeping the roof on these buildings. And without that federal funding, we are going to see a loss of coverage of an area of Alaska that is unfathomable to people outside of the state. Like I said, our broadcast alone is the size of Ohio or bigger. And we're not the only public radio in Alaska that has a coverage area like that. We will see a loss of coverage that's bigger than the West Coast combined, save for Alaska.
So do you have journalists like covering city council meetings? Like, do you have radio journalists who are doing stories in Valdez that wouldn't be doing that?
We, we don't have staff journalists. And that is because of the state budget cuts. The state of Alaska, their funding, the primary use that that funding was utilized for at our station and at some others, was local journalism. And so without that, our capacity for local journalism is significantly lower. We still do get local stories from other network journalists and from volunteers. And occasionally, I myself will do like historical programming and things like that. I don't do journalism anymore, because it feels like a conflict of interest, given my position as a public figure. So I don't do contemporary journalism, but I do do programmings of historical and cultural interest. We do have people that create journalism here. But no, we don't, we do not have a staff journalist anymore due to the state budget cuts. With the federal budget cuts, we are looking at not having a broadcast anymore.
So what's like a solution for rural radio stations that we haven't talked about?
The discussion that we've had in the recent couple of years is what happens if we just fund the rural public media? What if we just fund the public media that serves only a few thousand people in these tiny communities out in the middle of nowhere? And realistically, the cost of the state is a quarter or a fifth of what we used to spend on public media to fund these rural stations.
Because we have so much money going to the more urban stations in Anchorage and Fairbanks or...
Yeah, precisely. And I mean, those urban stations, they do provide more service. Of course they do. Because they have a bigger workforce to draw from. They have a bigger community to receive resources and news tips and community involvement, community support, volunteer services.
But they also have a population that could buffer the loss of state funding in a way that a rural station doesn't.
Precisely. It goes back to my analogy about WNYC. WNYC is the most popular public radio station in the world. But they have a population of over 12 million people that they serve. If everybody gives them a penny, they have more than enough money to continue to operate. We're, in these rural communities, people are giving everything they've got, and they don't have much. Because these are impoverished, small communities that are far from metropolitan areas. And in many cases, they have one type of economy, or maybe two or three. They have a very narrow band of people and resources to draw from. And the state and the federal government is designed to fill those sort of gaps for the need in these rural communities. That has been a part of the culture of Alaska since its founding, that we do support these small rural communities. And right now, we're looking at a catastrophe that we're doing almost nothing at the state level to address.
Well, I wonder if that would work at a federal level even, of like, our federal delegation making the argument and running the bill to provide funding for rural stations, not urban stations. And in a way, that kind of solves the problem of them being afraid of the whole liberal bias. Because they wouldn't be pouring money into WNYC. They wouldn't be pouring federal money into the stations that, A, don't need it as much, and B, are sort of the poster child for the legislators who are claiming there's this enormous liberal bias in public media.
One of our local appeals was shared by a national figure who's famous for other reasons. But he also used to work in public media in Boston. And he said, "The station where he worked is looking at a cut of about 1.5% from the federal rescission." And stations in Alaska are looking at cuts at 50, 60, 70, 80, and even 90%. The difference is the population.
Why did you run for office?
That is a loaded question. When I was about 24 or 25 years old, I was recognizing a pattern, which now, I mean, I think almost everybody in the country would agree with me, that elected officials were just getting older, and they were being kind of out of touch with the problems of the young people. Not because they were malicious, or because they weren't trying, but because they just could not possibly relate, because their life experience was so different. And it was a concern of mine. And I also, as I said, I grew up in very low income. That group is the only group that is less represented in public office than young people. And so I spoke to people in my immediate circles that were in those demographics, that I thought were, you know, smart go-getters, that might have something to do and something to say. And I tried to convince a lot of people to have an interest in running for public office. And I talked to them, and I said, "Come on, you know, you care so much about the community, and you have all this experience and all this knowledge, and you would be a perfect fit. Why don't you do it? Why don't you do it?" And there came a point where I had said that to too many people, because people started saying it back to me. And I realized that I was kind of being a hypocrite.
So you decided to run mainly about representation. You wanted more young people to be involved. You wanted people of lower socioeconomic status to run, and couldn't get somebody else to do it, so you did it.
Essentially, yeah. A lot of people, they hear me say that, and they think that I'm implying that there's some sort of insider group, a boys' club, that are just keeping us down. And sometimes that is the case. I mean, just generally as a society. There really are people that are deep-pocket, high-power, bad-faith individuals that are doing things to keep us down. Us being, you know, in air quotes, the "us" that they're keeping down.
Young, poor people.
But that's not what I was targeting as trying to solve the problems I was seeing in my community. It's not that the people were doing anything bad or malicious. It's that they were out of touch. It's they could not conceive of the problems that my peers were experiencing, because their life experience had been so drastically different that even saying it to their face, it was like we were speaking another language.
Do you have a specific example?
Well, the classic example that you'll see cited by every millennial ever is when they tell their parents, "Oh, man, I'm having a really hard time with my job search." And they say, "Well, why don't you just walk right into place and shake the manager's hand?" That's not a thing anymore. Now, they'll only let you apply online. You have to fill out 500 applications for one job. And everybody else in your entire age group, and half of them with master's degrees, are applying for the exact same job. There is no walking into the branch and shaking the manager's hand, because the manager lives in Southern California, and he telecommutes or whatever. That world doesn't exist anymore. And it's the same with so many things, like the housing market, for example. Something that I have been told by so many people in good faith, people, older people than me, that believed it was the correct and responsible choice. They say, "Well, you should buy a house. You shouldn't be renting." They say, "Why don't you just buy a house? By the time I was your age, I was buying a house." And I tell them, "The reason I don't buy a house is because I cannot afford one. Banks will not loan me the amount of money that it takes to buy a house." Right now, a house costs eight times the average income.
Yeah, what is, what's the housing market like in Valdez?
It's pretty similar to the national housing market. An average home in the national market today is $416,000. The average home in Valdez is very close to that.
And you guys have 26% mobile homes?
That is the only exception to the high cost of housing. The only real example of widely available, affordable housing here are mobile homes. And there are mobile homes that were brought here in the 1970s for the construction of the TransAlaska Pipeline.
And I've experienced this in other tight housing markets in other parts of the country and in Alaska, is that when that happens, mobile homes may be the most affordable, but they are absolutely overpriced for the quality of mobile home. And you wouldn't pay that much for a mobile home anywhere else. But you'll pay it in Valdez, because you have no other option.
As an anecdotal example, one of my good friends, as recently as maybe a year and a half ago, he was making what most would consider a middle-class income. He was making about $80,000 a year. And he married his sweetheart, and she was working as an accountant and making about $60,000 a year. Collectively, that is a nice, comfortable income. And they could not qualify for the purchase of a house at the current market rate. They are living in a mobile home that they had to buy. And for that mobile home, a 1976 mobile home, they bought it for almost $100,000.
That's crazy.
And 20 years ago, that exact same mobile home would have sold for $5,000.
I think one of the problems, and we, so I've done a lot of work on mobile home stuff this, since I've been in the legislature, is mobile homes maybe not being designed for the snow loads in Valdez, period. Much less one that was built 50 years ago. Like, it's probably not safe.
No, it's almost absolutely not safe. Almost every year, we have at least one mobile home have a major structural failing from snow loads. have a major structural failing from snow loads. And the fact that mobile homes make up a quarter of our entire housing stock puts an enormous amount of pressure on the housing stock with the fact that they are, as you said, aging and not designed for this environment to begin with.
And what do you see as a potential solution?
Well, so on city council, I was one of the founding members of our housing committee. And one of the actions that we did as a housing committee is we applied for a program called PRICE through Housing and Urban Development. And it is a program that is specifically intended for the replacement of aging mobile homes in communities that are especially reliant on mobile homes. We were not awarded that grant. It was much, much more competitive than Housing and Urban Development had appraised it to be. They thought that they might get within dozens of applications. They got hundreds. And our ask was honestly pretty high for a community our size because every mobile home had to be in the replacement category rather than the repair category. And that's for two reasons. One, because of the level of disrepair that many of them are in. And two, because of their age. They would not allow homes built previously to 1976 into the repair category. They must be placed into the replacement category. And because that's about the exact time that they were working on the TransAlaska Pipeline, all of the mobile homes were made slightly before that. During my time on city council, I found, like you have found, that it's not so easy as to just say, let's build housing. You have to find mechanisms to do that, and you have to find mechanisms to fund that as well. So one of the things that we were successful at in even the early days of the committee was coming up with ways to incentivize the development of housing. We did a housing incentive program that gives $10,000 for developers per additional housing unit. That's not just to corporate developers. That's also available to private citizens. So some of those awards have been given out just to individuals adding an apartment into their home. Some of the examples in which it was most successful was the senior housing development here in Valdez. We worked with a lot of different agencies and with a private developer to develop subsidized senior housing. We built 28 units of senior housing, which sounds like a small number to somebody coming from a big city. But for a small town like this, that is more than all of the units of senior housing we had previously to that. And just recently, one of the developments that I'm most optimistic about is the development of low-income housing in partnership with the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation and AKA, which is their nonprofit branch. They are developing 20 units of low-income housing. And the thing that I'm most proud of is, in the collaboration, the location that we settled on for the development of that housing is directly across the street from our elementary school.
Very cool.
And there's a lot of reasons why that's important. The first one being, in almost every community where you'll ever live, the homes nearest to the school are usually high-cost, high-value homes. And so you have middle to upper-middle-class income families that dominate that area. And low-income communities are usually very far away from the schools. And one of the things that our community has done since I was a kid that is a big step in the right direction is they have an after-school bus program that allows kids that rely on the bus to still participate in some of the extracurricular and after-school activities. But when I was a kid, no such program existed. So all the kids in my neighborhood, which was a low-income neighborhood, the minute the school was out, they had to get on the bus and they had to go home. So not only did they miss out on things like extracurricular activities, they couldn't be in the chess club or the basketball team or academica or anything like that. They also can participate in tutoring that happened after school. And a lot of my peers in my neighborhood struggled with things like learning disabilities, elite literacy, and all kinds of things that probably could have been addressed through tutoring or at least improved upon. And now, those same kids, although we do have the after-school bus program now, there are still opportunities that any Alaskan will tell you, they exist because of the school. You go to any Alaskan community, and the school is the center of that community. In some cases, literally. It's where they hold their community events. It's where they hold public meetings. It's where they hold picnics and barbecues and 4th of July and all kinds of community-building activities happen at the school, with the school as the center of the community. And that's as true here as it is anywhere else. And now, an entire generation of low-income children, potentially, will have better access to those opportunities because they'll live in proximity to their elementary school.
Hey, question about the $10,000 incentive that could go to, you know, an individual homeowner who decided to add an apartment. How do you guard against them taking that $10,000 incentive and building an apartment that they just use for short-term rental?
Deed restrictions. We have a deed restriction agreement with anyone that receives the incentive that they have to use the additional unit for long-term housing for a period not less than five years.
So Valdez is a special place. It's my understanding that one of the reasons why you guys run into trouble when applying for federal programs is because the income for Valdez per capita appears high because you have some high-paying jobs associated with the pipeline, the oil industry. And that kind of skews it in such a way that the community is not a low-income community.
That's precisely correct. So we fall into a very strange category of economic outlay that they call colloquially the double-humped camel. Most communities of the world around, their income chart looks exactly like a bell curve, with the vast majority of people falling directly in the middle and a very small amount of people at super-low income and a very small amount of people at super-high income. In Valdez, because of the unique conditions of our economy, because so many of the jobs here, in fact, two of our largest employers are the oil and gas industry and the hospital, those are on the high-income side of the bell curve. And then our largest employing industry, is not largest paying, but largest number of employees, are visitor, retail, and service industry. And those all fall primarily in the low-income category. So we have a, an arc that goes up and then back down in the middle and then back up again at the higher income range. And that is almost unheard of. We have very few people that fall into what you would call the true middle class with a population of only 4,000 people. You only need 100 high-income jobs to raise that average very significantly. And we have around 350 of those such jobs. But we have 1,000 low-income jobs.
And what's the population of Valdez?
4,000.
4,000.
So one of the things that we have been successful with recently, and I don't know how far we can press the success into the future, but when we have applied for federal programs in the past, we have almost consistently been refused because our average income is above average. We have asked that they instead look at the modal income, which is if you take every income and you put them in a row, instead of adding them all up and then dividing by the total number, you just put them all in a row, and then you point to the one in the middle. The modal income in Valdez is lower than the national average. And that's what's so strange about that double-humped camel arc. It is a statistical anomaly. And we have to make this argument every time we apply for state and federal grants because they don't like to grant what they don't consider a high-needs community.
One line of argument about Valdez in particular is that you have your own sovereign wealth fund. And I think sort of a cynical approach that we've heard from some legislators is like, well, if Valdez has a problem with housing, Valdez should use their sovereign wealth fund to solve it. And they shouldn't be talking to the state, and they shouldn't be testifying on bills in Juneau because Valdez has more money than any other city in Alaska.
So this is another example of what we were talking about just a moment ago in regards to the gap in understanding that you sometimes have between the represented and the representing. It's impossible for everybody to know everything. But that is something that we were challenged with at the discussion on your bill.
I'll describe the bill for listeners. So House Bill 13 is my bill that would offer optional property tax exemptions to municipalities if they chose to. That's what optional means, so no one has to do it. For first-time homebuyers, for landlords who rent to low-income people and don't overcharge them for rent, for mobile home park owners who make major infrastructure investment in their mobile home parks, and for landlords who convert short-term rentals to long-term rentals.
Exactly what you described is the reason that I supported your bill, and it's the reason why I agreed to do this interview. So three notes about the sovereign wealth fund is, I may be biased in talking about it because my grandfather is one of the people that helped to architect the fund. John Devens.
John Devens.
We call it the Valdez Permanent Fund, and it is based in large part on the Alaska Permanent Fund, but also in large part on the Norway Sovereign Wealth Fund. The fund was set up within the city charter. And within city charter, we cannot draw more than 1.5% of the total value in any given year. So it would not be by any means a solution for some kind of major funding deficit in our community. It would only make up, you know, a small percentage of our total funding because of the limitation that was wisely placed by the architects of the fund. And another thing that is kind of interesting that you brought up is when we were in the meeting discussing the pressures on housing in rural Alaska, one of the people that spoke against the initiative, what they said about Valdez specifically is, why don't you use the money from that sovereign wealth fund in support of housing? And I will tell you, we do. We specifically use some of that 1.5% draw that we're allowed to take from that fund. We dedicate it toward our housing development incentive that I was telling you about. You and I are very aligned in regards to our state's necessity to do better on housing. That is why I ran for public office, was because we had a dearth of housing in this community. That was one of the primary motivators that got me to want to run, is I looked at my community and I looked at my peers, and I saw so many people that were living on couches and that were renting a room that was never meant to be a bedroom. And to be completely honest, I had peers that were homeless. I had peers that lived in cars. I myself lived in a car during college.
Do you have homeless people in Valdez?
So this is something that I feel like a lot of people do not consider in regards to homelessness in rural and small communities. They don't see homelessness the same way that you do in metropolitan areas, where you will see people literally living in the streets. In rural areas, there is not as much of a benefit being seen as a homeless person. In a metropolitan area, if even one out of 1,000 people you see in a day gives you a helping hand, that is enough that you can get a hot meal in your stomach. But in a community like ours, you won't see 1,000 people in a day. You might not see 100 people in a day. But what you will get is you'll get asked to leave. You'll get kicked out for loitering. You might get harassed. And so the risk of being homeless is bigger than the reward of being able to ask for help.
The risk of being visibly homeless person.
Precisely. Being visibly homeless in a small community does not have a lot of benefits because we don't have as many social programs. We don't have a homeless shelter. We don't have a soup kitchen. We have a very great food bank, but they don't do hot meal service. We don't have as many people walking the street on an average day that might put a dollar in your cup or a sandwich in your hand that would make your day a little easier.
Right.
So the homeless people in rural communities, they're there. They just aren't as visible. They're living in the woods in a tent, or they're living in a car parked in some, you know, rural dirt road. They are not making themselves known because the only thing that they will get for making themselves known is additional hardships.
Another stereotype is that the reason why you don't see homeless people in Valdez is because they moved to Anchorage. Can you refute that?
I don't personally know anyone that became homeless in Valdez and then moved to Anchorage. And I do know most of the people in Valdez. I don't personally know of anybody, off the top of my head, that matches that description. But do I think that is a thing that has happened? Absolutely. I think almost all of the rural communities have had at least someone that has relocated to Anchorage because they view Anchorage as a place that has opportunities or, you know, has things like social services for the homeless, things like homeless shelters and food kitchens and things like that. And I think in many cases, they arrive there and they're disappointed to find that those services are not as widely available as they were led to believe.
Do you have a book to recommend?
Do I have a book to recommend? Can I recommend more than one?
Yeah.
Let me pull up my reading list. So the first book that I would recommend is a book about the Exxon Valdez oil spill. And it is a book that is specifically people that were personally affected or impacted or involved. It's called "The Spill: Personal Stories From the Exxon Valdez Disaster." And it's by Sharon Bushel and Stan Jones. And the second book, this is not a book that I entirely ascribe to, but I think that it has lessons in it that are worth hearing from people that have not yet been familiarized with the housing problems that young people are facing today. And it's called "Yes to the City: Millennials and the Fight for Affordable Housing."
Very cool. James Evans, thanks so much for being on the podcast today.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you to my staff, Kyle Johansson, for helping me make this podcast listenable. Thank you, listeners. If you liked what you heard, please subscribe, rate, and review us. To contact me, email rep dot andrew dot gray at aklike dot gov or call 907-269-0123.